What's up? So we're gonna start in unison. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. And drop. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. Nice, nice and easy. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. Alright, everybody wants the piano. There is one day, there is one day. Walk it up. There is one day. Do it again. There is one day, there is one day. Everybody on alto. There is one day, one day, one day. Do that again, outside. There is one day, one day, one day. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. There is one day in your course, there is one day in your house, there is one day in your course than thousands elsewhere. Hey. There is one day, 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 there is one day.
Alright, hello everybody, shalom, welcome. It's here as the living, here we're living in that which we have pursued and we're grateful and thankful for you joining with us having a special session today. First before we start as always made the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable and Yahweh the sight he is our strength and our redeemer and it's in his name which is his authority that we pray praise proclaim project and protect today's message and conversation. Amen, amen. As always we give all honor to the most high Yahweh Allah Heem we give all honor to the most high for my wife Beyana Maima who lives the life to say able to be honored. You can follow her on TikTok YouTube her website Pinterest and many other platforms blooming flourish not A N D but the letter N bloom and flourish. You can follow, once again follow her TikTok YouTube her website and Pinterest she's a healer she's a herbalist she's a chemist she's a biologist biologist by degree and the tansure of the month is for the respiratory system it is I am immune and so feel free to reach out to us for that amongst many other things and I'm excited to have her we're thankful for Solomon we're thankful for our family we're thankful for each and every one of you for joining us today and taking time out with us and we appreciate you so thanks for being with us and today on our special session we're gonna talk about the value of a diamond if you will. There's a proverb we've listened to some African proverbs during our family day today and we were listening to one specifically I'm not gonna quote it exactly probably but it basically says something along the lines of this that a diamond's value is never, is never, or a diamond's value it doesn't get lost just because people aren't admiring it, right? And that's something a lot of people deal with frustrated with have all types of issues with because we're like well other people aren't giving us this they're not giving us time nobody's chasing me nobody's marrying me nobody's doing this nobody's doing all these different things and so it gets us in a place where we start believing that our value is attached to stuff that it shouldn't be attached to so that's what we're gonna talk about today before we start getting too deep into it and I get out the way so that my lovely wife can begin to do what she does and give us great knowledge. Thank you Sister Shima for being on Sister Astrid. Michelle thanks for being with us. Y'all, y'all ain't tired yet alright shalom how you doing? Sister Sharice Sister Sonia. Let's see I believe this everybody sees so far those who are coming in those who are on the podcast with us as well Sister Tracy we appreciate everybody on all the platforms so once again we're talking about a lot of people believe their value is attached to everybody who has to be chasing them and all these different things or if people aren't chasing you if people haven't dug you up then you're apparently not a diamond yet which is how a lot of people think about ourselves and so what do you what do you think about that what would you like us to do with some foundational stuff maybe that you'd like to make sure you get across?
Well I do first of all love that African proverb that a diamond's value is not based on the lack of admiration. You know just because someone hasn't seen it or someone who sees it doesn't actually like it doesn't make the value doesn't make the diamond any less valuable it's gonna be valuable to somebody you just have to wait for the right admirer the right person you know like another proverb you know beauty is in the eye of the beholder or you know the value is inherent like we have to understand our value is inherent too like just because we are who we are we are valuable we are unrepeatable we are unique there is nobody that's ever been created before or since that is like us we are you know just more valuable than anything to the most high and we have to see ourselves in that way I was we were talking to one of our, one of our members one of our family members here and they were talking about, they were they were you know insulting themselves and you know I just had to stop them and say you know listen you wouldn't let me talk to you that way you wouldn't let anybody else talk to you that way so why would you say those things about yourself and I think a lot of times we get into negative self-talk way worse than any of our enemies could ever do because we probably punched him in the face before they got the sentence out or finished a thought of something so awful as you know to say we have some type of unappealing or unattractive characteristics or calling ourselves you know jelly belly or something like that like the conversation would just be over.
Yeah you know and it goes to that place of, it goes to this this place of when people you know I like the way it said cuz really if you think about it in essence a lot of people are like well because nobody's purchasing me as a diamond then it means that I'm not a diamond you know and or somebody hasn't dug me out the ground yet so it means I'm not a diamond or I haven't even gone through the process of being cold and being pressurized right because we I think we talked about that on one of the Shabbat Shalom podcast or you know one of the podcasts on Kofi Forty Podcasts but Shabbat Shalom sessions where you know we we're talking about a diamond cuz a lot of people forget that diamonds don't start off as what we consider to be diamonds and so even if you're not in a place where somebody can put the the glass towards you so to speak you know and the looking glass or whatever you would call the microscope I don't know what you call the lens you know but just because somebody's not too able to appreciate you yet doesn't mean that you're not a diamond and one thing that I was actually thinking about as we were talking about speaking further I was thinking about the fact that you know who really knows the who really knows what a diamond's values were is the person that's forced to dig it up right like there's a lot of people who sell diamonds who will tell you oh yeah it's worth this much amount but they didn't have to go through the process of digging it up you know there's people who have died whose lives have been given just so that a diamond could be worn by somebody right like we have ancestors who have died just so that you know you can be a diamond we have you know you have family members who've gone through extreme hardships some of our parents have gone through hardships that we have we have never had to bear and we hope and pray that our children would never have to bear by the way they hope and pray that their children that your children and your children's children never have to bear because they they still we see the the scars on them sometimes as they walk we see them walk with limps and stuff because of things they had to do sometimes when they talk we see them talk with the with the feistiness or anger or frustration on certain things sometimes when they don't even know what to say it's because that they didn't have time to even think about how to speak through or think through those things they just had to move so it's like we you know the person you know sometimes we forget maybe maybe even I don't know like maybe you can't ask everybody but maybe think about what you know somebody to think for a lot of us on here right think especially who dealt with coming out of slavery right as far as our ancestors think back like how much value your ancestor would have if they saw you being able to get a college degree you know think about somebody in eighteen twenty a black person right and think about you being able to go you know to whatever school I don't care if it's HBCU PWI whatever online school but you've been able to do that think about how much somebody is like man I'm not saying you should stop here but think about somebody says man that person's able to make fifteen dollars an hour you know like think about somebody who's like man that person's able to buy a house or a home you know they were trying to buy freedom you know they were trying to buy stuff you know how much value would they have looking at you being like man you know that person can 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 speak well that person you know even though I'm not saying that should be the end of BRB or whatever just think about that the person who had to dig up the diamond usually is the person that sees the value in it more than everybody else the person who had to give up their life just so that the diamond would exist and you know think about think about who you whose shoulders you're standing on every time I speak you know I have generations of people who are looking you know looking at you know I have I feel like we have a great responsibility to the people that are on and people that come on with us and people we reach around the world but think about the the amount of people that are in the past whose shoulders we stand on that's something that drives me it's like sometimes when I'm trying to figure out a way to get around something I need to do and I'm like you know I wouldn't even be able to have the opportunity to do this if it wasn't for somebody and man if they were standing here right now would they be excited about me trying to get out of this or would they be frustrated by like hey you we we did everything we could to get you to this even by the way not just the people who went through slavery think about the kings you know we're not just from slaves think about the kings who were kings and ruled over empires and even though somebody might have taken that from you they set the standard you know think about the Montes Musas and the Queen Nzingas and the Queen Shivers and the Queen sorry the King Solomons and you know the list goes on and on the Hail Salassi Salassi right there the the all these different people the the chiefs the chieftains the 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 queen or chief Khalifa right like all these different people that are out there right all these people that went through this stuff to get us to this place and just because we can't see the value if you sometimes can just think about somebody else and how they perceive you hey think about the most high who made the universe and said you're so valuable that I'm gonna give my only begotten son because I see the value when you coming through when you start looking through that prism it's hard to not see yourself as a diamond or to see
No fun intended.
Yeah I mean you know.
But yeah I mean I I love it and I love where I believe you were going with it like the struggle where you've come from you know a diamond's value is based on quite a few things but where it comes from you know you know the the amount of work it took to get it also you know the process that is put through cuz you said you know they come out of the ground raw and just like a rock but they have to go through a process to be this shiny thing of of great admiration that everybody wants to to have also the the cut the clarity the cut of the diamond and the setting where it is where it ends up you know is also extremely important in the value of the diamond.
Yeah think about what what one of the steps is is that you know one of the steps first you know one of the first steps that happens is it has to go you know especially if it's man-made which a lot of the diamonds you get nowadays are man-made you know but and they sell them for the same price you know so just for those who are thinking that you're buying something that's always coming from the ground you know they're selling a lot of stuff from that's man-made and the stuff that's made from the ground they keep locked up and stuff but you have to like you have to see that when it comes to a diamond like one of the first things they're gonna do is they're gonna set it on fire you know we always we we have like sayings that we say in here and we repeat them a lot you know they have to be tumble you know you know we have people on here who did like we but we we go through this process of like or we say these things over and over again but we saying because we really mean that we want you to to think about it right we always say something along the lines or we always say something along the lines of this how how many of you who are on today have not survived through any through something in your life?
Yeah you always made the cut.
Yeah yeah you oh that's great you always made the cut right but there's nothing that you've gone through in your life that you have not survived so being on fire is part of becoming a diamond you know having some things now fire if we were talking biblically we could talk about the spirit or heat you know we could talk about the pressure you said do you have to be refined or do you have to be refined and take it into fire? I mean I guess you don't but there's something that all diamonds go through right diamonds all diamonds go through whatever is necessary you might need to it might be part of the process right if you're gonna be a diamond you know and that's just just the context I know we can talk about there's different ways or geology and get into some things as far as you know diamonds being made but just let's roll with this for context okay you know but
I love the whole analogy of a diamond just because you know it's not just what's on the outside what's on the inside is what counts when you're looking at a diamond when someone's evaluating the the value of a diamond they're not just looking at the surface of it they're looking inside of it because what's inside that makes the diamond the most valuable are there a bunch of what do they call them inclusions or markings is it is it dirty on the inside? Because it could look pretty on the outside but if it's not doesn't have those prisons on the inside if it's not correctly formed on the inside it doesn't matter how nice it looks to the naked eye on the outside that's just superficial and that doesn't give it its value.
Yep so so and all that you know you gotta be ready to you know go through through that and the fire and the fire is gonna even purify not just the outside but the inside it's it's almost like you know we don't talk about precious metals that often you know as far as the the process metallurgy and stuff but if you look at you know certain gold or silver whatever some of them are more valuable just because when they start off there might be like ninety five we think that like you know when you see gold it's a hundred percent gold when you see gold it's got a bunch but there's some gold that might have like ninety five percent gold it might be like eighty percent gold some gold might be sixty percent gold right but you go through a process what's the first thing they do they burn it because they're trying to also not just pressurize it but they're trying to what they're trying to burn the impurities out then they're trying to that's why they melt it you melt it and then they just like you would when you're filtering water they're gonna filter it they're gonna go through cleansing it they're gonna go through a process of trying to see okay now we've got just pure gold and so if the fire never hits right if if you can be gold without the fire like you can be ninety five percent gold which is that's 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 pretty good however it's not perfection it's not maturity it's not what you can get see now mature gold is gonna is gonna be in a better place as far as value but you have to go through fire first to get mature gold right and so if it's just stone coal hard rock whatever it is that we're doing as far as a diamond a diamond has to be it has to be set on fire first right before it has it has to go through things that qualify one of the qualifications to become a diamond is fire and and right now you might be going through those things that qualify you might be going through the hardship or trying to learn or man I tried to get this relationship to work right but the relationship didn't work right you know I've been trying to study my words and I didn't know how to study the word I've been trying to learn these names for y'all whatever it is and I'm just coming across it there are so many different things that we go through but that's you know there's a burn there might be a thing of like you know you on the street you know dealing with homelessness you know that been there done that you know my wife's you know been there to a certain extent right like you know it might be I'm single parent trying to figure this thing out it might be you know I've been you know to jail I've been on house arrest I've been you know I'm addicted to a substance whatever it is that's a you know and I'm coming out of it there's a purification you know I was with somebody for twenty years and I thought this was gonna be great and come to find out like all I did was go through hell and hardships and stuff but also too even though that person might have done a lot to me are there things that I could have been better and I gotta go through a purification process right to get back to that chasteness to get back to that place to where I'm ready and I'm pre-qualified to if I'm blessed for a wife or for a husband this time I'm going to be when I'm supposed to be I'm not gonna try and find out what a husband or wife is after the fact there's a fire there's a burning part that goes into it then after you go through the burning phase then comes the pressure you know a lot of people are like okay I went through the fire so everything's great you know you have these songs you know you know well it's not Kanye's song I forget who he remixed it from but you know like people love song like through the fire and all that and it's like
And Shaka Khan?
Shaka Khan right and through the fire and all that stuff you go through the fire but it's like here comes the pressure you know now we gotta turn up the pressure see because just cuz you made it through the fire we have to go through the pressure because the pressure really proves whether you're a diamond or not like the fire is making sure that okay we're getting rid of impurities and things like that but the pressure comes when the pressure is cranked up the pressure is there to see can you actually survive if a prep cuz you know we don't want diamonds to where like you hit the diamond on the table and it breaks and stuff like that like you gotta be able to withstand some pressure so now we turn up the pressure and stuff and then you would think that it's over after that but wait a minute now you gotta get cut it so somebody has to see did you make it through the pressure if you made it through the pressure you still gotta get cut you're still not ready yet.
And guess what the only thing that can cut a diamond is?
Is another diamond. Iron sharpens iron diamonds sharpen diamonds that's a great point you know so it's like you're you're so so now you gotta start getting with people who are like you like-minded going through the same situation going through some fire going through some pressure game recognize game and now we gotta be okay well we both gone through some things now let's cut one another right you know husband and wife let's cut cut on one another you know cut on one another not always the negative form of cut you know but preparing to pair is literally to cut so to prepare before I can sell it I have to prepare the diamond I have to cut it and make sure that they can be used around and be given to somebody else and be a value to be worn a lot of us are like hey I'm a diamond I'm this I'm that he should be doing this she should be doing this and it's like well timeout you know are you are you prepared are you cut are you cut out for this oh sorry no are you cut out for this you know I'm trying to trying to see what's going on are you cut for this? You know are you cut are you cut to go through this pressure are you cut to go to the next level are you cut you keep talking about next level you know we have all these sayings new level new devil okay you cut the hands of new devils you know cuz there's some devils that didn't care about you cuz they didn't seem they didn't seem like you was gonna get it together you got it together now what you ready to do? You know you want the business to thrive what you ready to do? You know business starting a business and keeping a business isn't easy everybody talks about they want a business then a time comes time to make business decisions and business decisions are tough cuz business decisions might take your whole day.
Well people don't wanna go through the process I saw Minister Anais's video the other day and it was someone interviewing a Nigerian a young black millionaire from Nigeria and the guy asked him the question how do you get to be a millionaire at such a young age and he said take what you're doing and become the very best that you can at being that at doing that and focus on that and you know when you do that you get traction you get leverage and you can actually make a difference in that one thing as opposed to having scattered focus over here and scattered focus over there you really just go through the process of that one thing and make that the best that you can make it and then you can go focus on something else.
Yeah you know and it's and and once again you know that fire process that that process of fire I'm sorry you said like the process is so long for me I mean it can be a long process you know but that process is fire and then it's pressure and then it's cutting and then after that like my wife was saying then after that you gotta see even where you're placing.
Someone said Jack oh sorry quick Jack we said the process is so long for me yeah you know but I I think if we start looking at the process as being something enjoyable instead of because the process is a part of the whole experience like it's just like people say like the cliche or that you know it's not the destination it's the journey so it's like it's not just getting to the end it's like the whole process that got you to your end result is so valuable and it makes you who you are it's like I know it's so interesting I was looking through my our pictures the other day and just you know I didn't appreciate I didn't necessarily appreciate as much but I had to go through my pictures to organize to get a portfolio together and as I was looking through it I was like wow we had some we've had some really good times you know they haven't always been perfect but they're really really good and I'm really really grateful and it's a part of the journey of life of the the process of getting to where you are now it took something and to be able to appreciate that process and it just makes you feel stronger and better like when you look back and you look at how long it took you to get to where you're getting to nobody it's not easy for anybody I remember being in school and remembering how hard chemistry seemed to me and how like just unnecessary it seemed because I thought that it was easy for other people until I started going to like the after after-school tutoring sessions and realizing that the people who are really really good at it it's because they've practiced a lot it's because they've gone through the process and now it's they you know they've done it so much that they can't get it wrong but they had to go through the process just like I have to go through the process it's not easy for anybody and I think sometimes people think oh it's so easy for them and they get discouraged at what they have to go through instead of realizing that this other person already went through a lot of the things that you might have to go through it's not like there's a short cut for anybody. Oh let's see how far should I go back? We saw these. Let's see already Sunny said I'd rather have the real thing not man-made amen yeah a diamond to me is not really a diamond if it's made in a lab if it's something that a man made within twenty minutes rather than something that you know is natural and the most high made over thousands of years like it's a different to me it's a whole different thing I don't even see how you could call that a diamond. Let's see. Minister Anais said diamonds are hard they are hard they take a lot they take you know they take a huge punishment and keep keep going and that's how they're you know considered diamonds otherwise they would be discarded if they didn't if they weren't hard and they didn't weren't able to go through or withstand the pressure. Let's see. Shalom brother Terrence? I think I've gone too far okay.
Next W N says you must always go through something to be made the process is the journey so the process will never end.
This is really good. So um let's see. Let's see uh Blank Canvas said life tests tests and reveals your strengths strengths and weaknesses that's true and you know it's interesting how people say I would never do this and I'd never do that and I find myself you know saying the same things but then you know I have to sit back and think I don't know if I would never do this or never do that I've never been in put in that situation you know thank the most high that I've never been put in those types of situations to have to to see what I would do so I try to you know think of that and keep keep myself humble and try not to judge others because I don't know what they've been through and so I'd rather not you know be the one to judge that situation and also the older I get the more I feel like when I judge someone I end up in the same type of situation and so if if a negative thought like that comes to my head I start like just praying to just ask them please take this thought away from me because I you know that is not something that I wanna know I that's not something that I wanna experience no and you know you know I found found myself living out that quote-unquote karma of judging other people and that's rough. Terrence says I have seen that video too yeah the one on Minister Nineties's page is really good actually it just reminded me you know to put more focus into what I'm actually doing and stop trying to look here and look there just focus on one thing. Shalom Lily Reddemon. Shalom Lily Red Redamon. Let's see. Challenge said, it it's also not one. Oh, oh, hi, hi, little red dummy, challenge eighty-seven said, it's also not one. I'm the ones far, uh far in Africa with child labor, it's my opinion though, oh, yeah. Um just thinking about someone having to die or someone being mistreated to get a rock is, is um. Is kind of discouraging, so yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea of the child labor either. There's something said, true, some people appear to ease through it, yeah, a lot of people seem like they ease through life, but then. If you look at them and you really like know something about their lives, uh oftentimes, those are the people who. Have gone through the most um in silence, or have, you know, spent a lot of sleepless nights trying to keep up. Like I thought, you know, there was a girl in high school and she was like the homecoming queen and. Um the valedictorian, you know, just A plus student in everything and all honors courses. Um in acting, in the choir, um just so many accolades, and then for her valedictorian speech. She talked about how she was, she had contemplated suicide and how she'd actually had many, a couple of attempts at suicide. And everybody was like surprised because they were just like, but you're perfect, you know, everybody thinks of you as being perfect. And she she was just saying, no, she's gone through it, she's really gone through it, and because of her um. Quest at perfection and trying to live up to what everybody expects for her to be, her life has been really hard. She spent many sleepless nights trying to be the one to have the answer, to seem like she's the smartest in the room. And you know, she paid a price for it, and everybody else is thinking, oh, everything just comes easy to her, she's just so perfect. And a lot of people hating on her because they think, you know, um she had some type of easy way out, no. She just committed herself to doing things that, you know, ultimately made her very unhappy. To look a certain way for peo- for other people to see her value, she didn't see her value, that's why she felt the need to. And that was what her valedictorian speech was about, like, please don't do what I did because it, you know, it almost ended me, basically. Nobody has a an easy, an easy way out. Um all of us are experiencing life and, you know, joy and happiness does not come through, through things. Um it really comes through. The the struggle, like joy and happiness, you don't really have anything to uh. Compare happiness to, if you've never experienced some type of struggle, you don't know where, you don't really. Get the full grasp of what it is to enjoy something, if if something's always just easily given to you, you don't get the full grasp, like. That's how you can see people who seem like they seemingly have everything, and yet they're just so unhappy. I was actually watching a video on YouTube, YouTube the other day about um Zuckerberg, Mark Zuckerberg, the creator of Facebook's. Uh metaverse, he's, you know, created a metaverse, and one of the comics was, comics was so interesting, it was like, imagine. Being a billionaire, having everything po- you know, possible on this earth, and wanting to create imaginary world to live in, you know.
Uh X W N says, I'm new to you and your wife, uh like what I'm, what I'm hearing so far, keep the great work.
Oh, thank you. We got more comments. You want me to? Okay, let's see. Was saying, said amen to the focus and journey, uh she said, make the decision. Brother Clem said, I'm going through the process of changing the family contract all at once.
Focus and connectivity, said that, she said that's very disheartening. True, we oftentimes commit ourselves to things or people that make us unhappy, uh that Mark needs to escape from his reality. And I'm going, yeah, yeah. I don't know if you wanna talk, talk about this, so Shima was saying that people try to stick out of there, stay, you know, uh. Or stay connected to people with things that help them to not feel happy and things like that, and Shima was saying, I mean, uh. Min- Minister Nice was saying that she needs to err that Mark is trying to escape from the reality he's created, or possibly trying to find another way to even, even. Create another reality to have further ownership, virtual ownership of people.
Yeah, uh I think we focus so much on everybody else's experience. That we compare, instead of figuring out what makes us truly happy, what we really enjoy, what our purpose is. We focus on uh comparing, comparing. Uh just comparing apples to to cars, you know, things that are so so different. We try to uh figure out what somebody else likes, and you know, it's unfortunate, but we were programmed that way from. Pretty much from day zero, you know, while we're in the womb, we're hearing. That you have to be this way, you have to be that way, and we're very much aware of what's going on when we're in the womb, and we come out into the world and to. Um for lack of a better word, the the matrix, and we're taught that our feelings don't really matter. What we think doesn't really matter, we're taught to regurgitate back to a teacher, what they've told us, we're taught by our parents. Um to show people respect, even when they're not showing us respect, to um give up. What we want to make other people happy, like we're taught to share, um you know, and. I don't know if there's anything necessarily wrong with learning how to share, but a lot of times I see parents where they're like. Your your enjoyment, your um satisfaction doesn't matter right now because this other child wants your toy, so give it, give it to them. I don't, you you know, yeah, sure, it's gonna make you sad, but it's gonna make them happy, and so we're taught all the time to. Um not have boundaries, not think for ourselves, and all these things, and then. As we get older, we try to figure out what is we, we want, what is we like, we don't know. Um we're looking at other people comparing because we don't know what we want for ourselves, so we have to figure out what other people want to see if that's what we want. And then, you know, a lot of people look to escapism, we look to movies and. Other types of reality to try to make our own experience better, instead of, you know, just being who we are. Um understanding our own value, what what we value, a lot of times, we don't even know what we value. I was talking to somebody the other day about how ashamed I was when I was a Christian, and people would challenge my values. And I didn't have the vocabulary or the um understanding of what I even believed. Uh what my doctrine was, to um intelligently discuss what it was, it was all based on emotion. Like you shouldn't sin, uh because you're gonna go to hell, instead of. Well, this is the law and this is what we believe in, you know, having sound doctrine, I didn't even know what I believed. But I I had very strong feelings about it, if that makes sense.
And really, all that stuff we're talking about kinda goes back to the African proverb in the beginning, you know. That that a diamond's value is never gonna be predicated upon, uh you know, people chasing after it. Uh really, if you understand you're a diamond, like if we get down to the bare essence of the thing, if I comprehend that I am a diamond. I'm gonna tell you like this, as much as like I know not all diamonds quote-unquote are cut the same way or whatever. At the end of the day, if somebody has a real diamond, if somebody else has a real diamond, people don't really do a thing of like, oh, your diamond is better than the other, they just say you got a diamond. Like real talk, like, like, you know, uh if 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 my wife is wearing a diamond ring. People ain't really like, oh, okay, well, like, you know, can I, can I take my magnifying glass out, or can I take my prism that I look through and be able to? No, it's a diamond, you know, and when you recognize that about yourself, I am a diamond, that means I've already been through the fire. I've been through the pressure, I've been precut, I've been tumbled with every stuff comes with it right up, I've been cleansed. I've I've had somebody had to appreciate me, that right, means when somebody appreciates you, they are lifting up your value, right, so or somebody's saying. That you have a value, so when you say something to be appreciated, or when you say I appreciate you, we talked about this before in the line. Um sessions before, if somebody says, I appreciate you, what you're saying is is that I recognize that you have a value. Right, I've looked at what you have to do, have 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 to bring, and I appreciate you, and so. Just because somebody might not be chasing you does not mean you're not a diamond, if you're in the ground, you are a diamond. If you're on somebody's wrist, you're in a diamond, guess what, if somebody decides to wear you on your neck, it doesn't mean that your value goes up. It just means that your placement has been, like people see you from a different position, if if somebody drops you and you're not seen. For hundreds of years, and somebody happens to pick you up hundreds of years, for those hundreds of years, guess what, you were, you were still a diamond. You never cease to be a diamond, and I think that's one of the things that we have to get to is recognizing who we are, all of a sudden, you know, my wife was just talking about. Um who you are, how can you defend what you believe, um are you worried about what everybody else has to say? You know, some people go to, like, some people go to church, not because church is of real value to them, they believe that going to church somehow makes them. Even, you know, makes them um appreciate, which I guess you could say spiritually speaking, so to speak, but you know, what happens when now you leave church, like some people. That's the reason, you know, that's something that came from um chattel slavery and stuff too, but a lot of people, hey. The reason why, like when you say, man, somebody's deacons or somebody's preachers, or somebody's people who sit in the first row or whatever, they seem to be mean. Well, they're mean because like all week long, they feel like they have no value, they think that because they showed up to an edifice, they showed up to a building for one day for. Three, four, five hours, whatever it is, now all of a sudden, they have something that should be appreciated, but you were a diamond, you know, Monday through Saturday. You were a diamond when you were on your way, you were a diamond when you were leaving, you were a diamond because you were put through the fire, you were pressurized. You were precut with other diamonds, by the way, and so a diamond is a diamond, when you recognize that you're a diamond, it doesn't really matter at that point. Um so, you know, like you guys see on the, on the TikTok videos and stuff like that. It's it's only a matter of time before somebody's gonna try and say something about my hair, or about my teeth, or about whatever, and it's like, I'm still a diamond. A matter of fact, I'm so much a diamond, that as much as you're trying to cut me, you can't cut me unless you're a diamond. So all you've done is you've seen the value, you appreciated me, you're trying to cut me, but because you're not, so when I put a video out to you. I'm not even really talking to you because you don't cut me, you don't affect me, I know what I am, you know, by the way, even those people who say, get the haircut. Start wearing this this clothes that everybody else is, get a job like everybody else does and work a nine-to-five, because apparently if you don't work a nine-to-five, the thought process is, I can't provide for my family, right? So, you know, because they say, hey, you have to be a diamond, like, or that's what we think a diamond is, but the problem is, is that. You don't recognize, I I'm I'm all right, like, my wife and I have set things up great for ourselves, we have land, we have each other. We have family that backs us up, we have you as a family that backs us up, uh we back each other up. Our children are gonna do well, our generations are gonna do well, land is right around the corner, more land, we got land, but more land, bigger land, a whole lot of land. People are trying to get us to have meetings with them to see if they can somewhat, I won't say all the way, but somewhat say, hey, can you take some of this land off of us? Have people, you know, I'm not, I haven't had the discussions yet, but have people even saying, hey, if I gave you this many thousands of dollars, what would you do with it? Well, first, we need to have a conversation cuz you giving us that much, we gonna get this contract together, because we're not gonna have you coming back and saying, well, give me with this back or blah, blah. Right, but, you know, all I'm saying, all that to recognize, like I'm a diamond, so even now, people try to tell us, we want you to do this if we give you this much money, guess what we say, we're diamonds. We don't have to move according to whatever, like the most high has already shown us that we gonna have what we need. We see it now, like, we see the light of the tunnel, we see we can do stuff on Patreon, we see we can do stuff. Like there's stuff set up for us to where our environment is straight, we've seen that we can do stuff with cryptocurrency, we've seen we can do stuff in classes. We see that we're able to teach ourselves things, we see we're able to educate ourselves now, um you know, we see that we can start meeting up together, we see that we can call. Each other and have a network, like, these are things that are there, we're diamonds already, so now when somebody comes outside, from the outside and says. Well, I don't, I don't believe what you're saying, unless you J- Jesus is the way, well, thank you very much, but we're diamonds. We're not cut by that, that doesn't affect us.
And the thing is, is that most people aren't qualified to even see your worth, like, it, when, when, when you have a diamond. Most people cannot, with their naked eye, even someone who is a professional on it, cannot look at it with their naked eye and tell the value of it. So a lot of times, we as diamonds are out in the world and we're letting people dictate our value, who don't have any type of qualification. To even see our value or see what we even are, like, some people, um you know. Don't even know that there's different colored diamonds, that they don't all just come in, you know, the clear looking, like some of them are yellow and those are worth more. And some, you know, someone who's the untrained eye would, you know, think of that as something else and would have no idea. The the value that they've just pushed aside to look at something that's way less valuable, and um, you know. Here I go with my shows again, I was watching another show where this girl, she had an opportunity, it was um. A Mr. Beast challenge on YouTube, and he he put in front of this woman a ten thousand dollar diamond, and he put a cubic sconia. And one box and the the real diamond, another box, he said, whichever one you pick, you can take, and she picked fake one, she didn't know. She didn't know what she's looking at, and a lot of times, people don't know what they're looking at, and they'll look at something superficially and think that they're getting value. And then when they go, you know, when they, when they do get the information, it's too late, they didn't realize that they just gave up something of value.
Saying is important there too, cuz even think about like the untrained eye, even with a trained eye, you still have to have a lens to look through. To be able to see the value of it, right, and that's why we keep talking about culture. You know, there has to be a li- lens that you're looking through, there has to be something that helps you to interpret, that what you're seeing is doctrinally sound. And therefore, you're interpreting it correctly and it's lawful, right? And the law protects you, right, so there's certain laws, there's certain regulations, if somebody's looking at diamond, like my wife was saying earlier, like mine was saying earlier. You know, okay, it's got the nicks inside, you know, it's not just what's on the outside, ooh, there's some stuff on the inside, okay, so it's valuable, but it's not quite as valuable as this one over here because. The inside, right, and there's a prism that we have to use to be able to do that, and a lot of times we're missing stuff, hey, shalom, sister Carrie, uh there's a lot of us who. Are missing a lot of things that are for us as a, as a group, um and as what the most high wants, because. We're looking for everything else except for what the most high has for us, um you know, we're looking for everything, it throughs another prism. Because that prism, you know, so so here you have, like, you know, think, think about that. Some, you have a a Bible, you have a law, you have a Torah, whatever you wanna call it, we have the Holy Spirit, we have um psych- kingdom psychology, we have. Soul, the spirit, uh even the flesh, the flesh is supposed to be in some subject, but the flesh is part of who we are, you have all these things that can come together, and they've given you the prism. Like Yah is giving us the prism right there, like there's a prism right here, all we gotta do is look through it, and what we do is we do what the world does. We just go, oh, okay, well, you know, that person, that that looks like a cubic sconia. Or that, and that looks like, but the cube, what you think looks like a cubic sconia, what are you basing that off of? That's, that looks like. Because if you don't have a prism to check it out for yourself, you know, there's, you know, what if, what if you're saying, well, that diamond, you know, it's not a shine. They can make cubic sconia look really shiny, and the diamond, by the way, needs to be shined up every once in a while. So just because a diamond's not as shiny as what it once was, all you do is you take it to get cleaned, or I don't know, that's the exact terms, but you know, you're taking it basically to get. To where it it you can see the way it used to be, and so, just because something looks shiny, that's why we have to be careful, what is it? I Satan, he has the ability to change himself into an angel of light, that means he can take, he he's been around the most high longer than us. And so he knows, okay, like, if somebody's looking for the most high, all I gotta do is is show them on the outside. This is what I look like, right, I'm, 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 you know, as long as it looks like a ring and I put it on the ring finger, and I make sure, you know, that it's got the, you know, the engagement ring. Behind and this and that and all that, and all, then they're gonna say, okay, then that's exactly what it's supposed to be, so you can, and and many women do this all the time, a lot of women do this to where. You know, they have like the, 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 the diamond that's like a lot, or maybe they get the um, the update. You know, every once in a while, you get the updated diamond, husband says, okay, I wanna show off, and I wanna make sure my wife knows that she's loved, so I saved up money, this one's. Even more, maybe they add to it, or sometimes they have diamonds and stuff like that, they have the diamond ring, but then they have other rings that are fake. That that kinda look like the ring that they have, and they'd rather wear the fake one out, why, because if something happens to the fake one, they're okay with something happen to the fake one. But they don't want anything happen to the real one, but a lot of people don't know, and really don't care, like, long story short, people aren't look, as much as we think. People, and that's something else, they have to be careful as a diamond, a lot of us think. That people are looking at you, trying to tear you apart and this and that or whatever, look, if you're in your place, as a diamond. If you see a diamond on somebody's finger, you know, you just go, oh, that's shiny, that's nice, her husband must really love her, and you kinda keep it moving. Like, it's, you don't really think about twice, like, ooh, I need to, some people be like, girl, you get that time, let me look at blah blah, but even, like, even in that, that's not a normal.
Only people who are unhappy are going to try to pick you apart, um and examine you under a microscope to figure out. What makes you tick, people who are happy don't have time for you, they're not thinking about you, most people aren't thinking about you, even the ones who are trying to pick you apart. It's not about you, it's about their own insecurities, they wanna pick you apart to make themselves feel bigger, it's not about you at all. So, uh you know, a lot of times, we have to get out of our own way and get out of our own heads and stop thinking that people care about us, because they don't, they care about themselves. And how um how they feel, and you know, if we can put ourselves in other people's shoes and look through their lens. If you can, if you can understand what somebody else wants or what somebody else is thinking, you're gonna be a rich somebody, because. People don't care about what you think or what you feel, they care about what they think and what they feel.
And the medicine ice was saying, I hated sharing, sister Sonia said, amen, resharing when the other. Is rude or not worthy, but old school ways, um Shima said, pleasing others before ourselves, yep, um. Also says, so true, Minister Maya, so true, a minister and I said, I am a diamond, amen, Sister Sonia said, right there. Our ti- right, there are times, uh see your values far better than you see yourself. Or others will see your value more than, yeah, um said, I was a diamond all along, amen, no matter where you were, that's right. Uh you said, you taught your son to be nice all the time, brother TJ, amen, thank you for the agreement, everybody with the amens in there, by the way. Uh you said, I said, be nice as 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 you leave them alone, hmm, let me see. My son's self-defense and path of the disciple, oh, being nice, okay. Also said, that's a word. Minister and I said, I'm a chocolate diamond, alright.
Chocolate diamonds are worth a lot, far more than uh. Clear ones.
Tamika said, yellow is my favorite color. Sister Sonia said exactly in agreement, um. Just as Sonia said, all we have to do is look through it, right, we've been given that 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 prism or that uh lens to look through. You said, amen, the fake look amazing these days, they perfected the process, yep, and by the way, if it's fake too, you know, after a while, all of it is gonna change color. So even if it is, like, you know, somebody, like, that's another thing too, like, somebody would, uh we are always looking for somebody else, and if you just keep staying. On track, like you're gonna separate yourself, you just keep being extra extraordinary, and everybody's ordinary, at some point, there's gonna be stuff that shows that indicates. You know, like, I'm not trying to talk about myself like I'm all that anything, however, like, if I talk with somebody, talk back with them. And we're doing these lives and somebody's going back and forth, after a while, it's very, like, you gotta see after like a matter of seconds, sometimes after a matter of minutes, it comes clear, like. What are you talking about, like, you know, or why are you attacking me and I'm not attacking you? And now, like, if, or even sometimes we literally stop and give people five minutes of fame, hey, alright, you show me exactly what you're saying in the Bible. Alright, or hey, alright, you you show me where I'm wrong, you're saying that I'm wrong, or, you know, people will say I'm the anti Christ spirit or something crazy like that, I'm like, okay, well, show me. What I'm saying is wrong, and it, there's a demarcation, there's separation that happens naturally. You don't have to worry about it, so be who you are called to be, and you will naturally separate, right, like, and I'm not even saying this, it doesn't always be a negative way, like. I say this all the time, my wife and I are different puzzle pieces, but we work well because we recognize that we're different puzzle pieces, so. I don't expect my wife to see the stuff that I see, even if it's frustrating to me, because I'm like, don't you see this? And I'm mad and blah blah, but at the end of the day, she's not supposed to necessarily see it that way, and I'm not supposed to see it the way that she does, and once we, when we are on that. And and that wavelength, even if we're a little irritated with each other, because we're not seeing, but when we just go, okay, you know, and fine, like, tell me real quick, okay. E- even if I don't like what you're saying, alright, fine, I'll try to make it work and I'll try to make it happen, it becomes easier. And we move better because we uh respect the differences, we respect the fact, and because she's a diamond, she's her, she's her diamond. And I'm my diamond, diamonds cut each other, we pre- prepare each other, so now, if I go out somewhere, there's times where I go out and somebody does something. And I'll literally be sitting there like, you know what, what would my, oh yeah, Maya already told you, blah blah, and so I'll do it. And I'll be like, oh, okay, well, she says, well, I've never thought about it before, had she not had a, you know, we think, you know, you sometimes it's an argument or something like that, which it really isn't, but. Maybe like, man, if we haven't had that argument or whatever, I wouldn't have done this, I wouldn't have bought this the way I did, or. I wouldn't have thought when I was getting this flower or whatever, I wouldn't have thought, get flowers like this or look like this or cut them like this, because. My wife was like, hey, if you do this and do this for 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 these reasons, whatever, I wouldn't have thought, you know, what was I doing today, I was um. Buying um um oatmeal and. And grits, and she was telling me, she was telling me about prices, now for me, I'm sitting there, I'm like, you know, well, whatever, it's just. What was it, two dollars, if it's two, she was telling me like, don't get it if it's a dollar fifty or more, because we can get it from, that's in such a place, or Aldi's, it's Aldi's. We can get it there, and I'm like, but you know, well, it's only like two dollars, even if it's three dollars, I don't care, it's three dollars, like, what is that, she's like, that's a lot, blah blah. And when I go there though, even though I ended up spending, what I was saying, I actually ended up spending because they saw the unit price or whatever, things I don't think about. I don't think about the, I know it exists, but I don't think about the unit price, but then I looked and I'm like, oh, okay, I see what they're saying, cause like, I'm about to get. This huge thing, and we're not gonna buy any for a while, and you know, that's worth it versus like getting the small thing, might as well got it from Aldi's, you know. But that's like, we are different in that, right, and that's not always the ma- the the male female thing, sometimes it it can reverse.
I'm learning to appreciate your intellect as well, like, you know, I, you, I'm very um. What do you call it? I don't know, I guess you could just say stubborn, I'm very willful and I'm very strong willed, and I think that I know best because. I have had to take care of myself for a long time, you know, so I think, okay, I can take care of myself, but then when I. Appreciate what you bring to it, uh I can appreciate that you've already scoped out the place, you already have, you know, the whole. La- le- layout of of a of a, so say we go into a store, you've already mapped out the whole store. You already know who's in the store, where their position is, what's going on, and when I realize.
Cause I'm hyper protective sometimes, that's probably why.
You know, how much he he has already prepared, like, and I understand now why he doesn't like going to certain places because. He has to be super vigilant, he has to be uh uh, you know, on high alert, or he is on high alert all the time, because he's already. Done the work where as I'm more like, woo-hoo, you know, in my own little la-la land and just looking at stuff in stores. You know, and and think about what all I can get to first, he's he's thinking about how can I keep my family safe and. You know, to me, it never occurred like that, because I don't think like he thinks, he's a protector, he's a provider, he he does those things. And you know, I'm off, you know, having the time of my life, meanwhile, he's like on high alert, he's he's working. So it's a whole different.
And I mean, she teaches me stuff like that too, because I don't, I I still don't do well with um, let's just do. You know, like, it's gotta be something planned or whatever, but I'm thankful though that she's teaching me about that, but also. You know, but I think, once again, it makes you work well together, you know, so like, we were, you know, um having a nice time on like walking through some. To walking through some stuff and walking through a a national park today, and you know, Solomon gets to just be a child. Um you know, she's teaching about certain things or whatever, and she's aware of certain things, asking certain questions. Meanwhile, like, you know, my my whole focus is like, who's walking around, uh I don't know, and she's like, oh, everybody's so nice today. Everybody's saying hello, in my mind, I'm like, I don't care if they said hello or whatever, I'm trying to make sure they don't get too close to y'all, but it's like a nice. You know, it it's it's a, it's a place of, you know, some type of balance, you know, some type of. Um art art gifts, and and sometimes like she's able to pull me into some things where I don't think about those things as much. So it's cool, you know, things like that, or uh you know, able to have, you know, jokes and stuff, you know, I might snap out of the joke time and go right back into the stuff, but I can at least. You know, be like, okay, I don't have to be thinking about everything else, I don't have to be worried, I don't have to be stressed out, because. You know, my wife is reminding me like, oh yeah, you know, there's fun in this or whatever, like, there's actually, you can smile, you can ju- and I I I, but that's not my. Fortunately or unfortunately, you know, it's great and and bad that comes with it, but it's not just, it's not a natural place for me. But once again, the puzzle pieces go together, so when she speaks, and it used to be when we go out, I used to be frustrated with it, like I used to get really upset, frustrated. And I was pulling her down, and it's uh, so it's taught me to have to speak love languages different, uh you know, she goes shopping, I go with her. Um and she asked me, you know, like, what do I think about something, I try to say it from a perspective that she does, so you know, I'll be like, okay, that's not. Before it would just be like, I was just there, I didn't really wanna be there, you know, I'm trying to be like all the other husbands, trying to sit somewhere else. And now it's like, okay, I enjoy the fact that she asked me, because if she would ask me, she's actually saying, what is your perspective? So like, even in that, as a diamond, she's kinda cut me to be like, okay, so.
Although, you were happy to be there, well, you 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 seemed happy to be there when we first got together, and you took me to Ikea. You, I was like, oh man, we're gonna get married, he's taking me to Ikea, and he wants to go to Ikea?
Well, but yeah, and even in that, though, it's interesting, cause, but you know what made me happy, what made me happy is that she's happy. Like, re- you know, really, like, at the end of the day, you know, if, I don't know, I I won't say that my wife is is the stereotype or whatever, but you know, like, if we do shop. You know, like, if you go shopping, you know, like, and she gets the 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 shopping cart is full. And then maybe we're gonna get all the stuff in the shopping cart, maybe we're not, you know, but like. But yeah, but I enjoy that she's happy, you know, and that's something where being around a diamond cut me, you know, being around a diamond allowed me to say, okay. Like, you know, the fact that she's happy, that's what makes her a diamond, you know, and the same thing, I'm sure with me, you know, there's a lot of things that obviously. I mean, I guess for sometimes just the fact I'm annoying to her, because I could sit inside all day and not care. Now I make sure I get out of the sun a few times, but I, but I'm, but I'm, it's my, I tell people this all the time, people don't believe me until you guys hang out with me a little bit, and then you guys see, I'll be quiet a lot. Uh because I'm very, I'm actually very introverted, when it's time to speak, that's my calling, you know, something sparks inside me, I get excited. Uh however, like, I'm I'm cool with if everybody were to leave all day. And I just was sitting in front of the computer, trying to make sure I got stuff together and type stuff and get some videos done and trying to catch up on things, like, you know, and then. You know, I'll I'll be tired, tired out, cause I've just been taking care of stuff and. And then every once in a while, through the day, I'll talk to people, but after talking and talking and talking, like, it takes a lot out of me, cause I'm not really.
Soldier, he, you know, his whole life is for serving, and like, I used to not be able to, you know, I didn't appreciate him, now I appreciate him. Like, I know exactly where he is and exactly what he's doing.
Right, eh but but you know, we cut, you know, just us us allowing each other to be valuable within our own space, has been like such a blessing. And learning that, and so now, even when I hear like husbands and wives and stuff like that, a lot of times, when we were doing life coaching, marital coaching. And I'm listening to somebody, one of the first things that I'm thinking about is, oh, okay, I bet you that there's not, they're not feeling like they're able to be valuable within their own space. If you can solve that part of the equation, like what makes that person feel valuable, that's why we talk about love languages and all this other stuff, like if that person feels valuable being them. And then you can be valuable being you, and then wait a minute, y'all can actually come together and be viable, be, and and then that's. The miraculous part is, how do we take two diamonds that are supposed to cut each other, and while they're cutting each other, somehow they actually become the same diamond? And they bring the same value to each other and to anything that's gonna wear to be in its presence, which means that it it, you know. I don't even know what that would be, double, triple, quadruple, quintuple, whatever in value, like, imagine if you could take, I don't even know the names, I'm not a big. Diamond person, so forgive me, but imagine if you could take, um what is it, the heart of the ocean or something? And you could take, I don't know, with another great diamond, but you could take like two of these uh amazing, immaculate, the hope diamond, and you could put them both together. And they wouldn't lose any value, and they would actually be bring everything to the table that they once did, and become some. Hyper or some some new, if fused, uh interfused version.
They probably gained exponential value at that point.
Right, like, and that's that's the, that's the miraculous part, that's the part that, you know, we are looking at Yah, doing what he does and being like, man, this is amazing. Uh because some of the same things that that, you know, we used to fight about now, the things that we laugh about, some of the same things that used to irritate us about each other. I say this a lot of times, like, it's things that used to irritate me about Maya or whatever, now, if she doesn't do them, I actually start asking her, are you okay? Cause like, I I know that if I don't see these things or whatever, it means you're not, you know, you're not happy, or you're not, you know, feeling yourself, maybe, maybe you're happy, but you're not feeling yourself. So like, and she'll ask me the same thing, and sometimes I'm like irritated, like, why is she asking me, but she's saying like, I'm used to you doing these things. And and you're not doing these things, like, so you're not in your, you're not at your diamond status, right, even, isn't that what they call it, even in travel? Like, the highest level, the diamond level, diamond status usually, so like, you're not a diamond status right now, you you live in a coach. You know, what is it that I can try and do, it to be able to figure out what's going on? I mean, we've had to travel there, right, but I mean, at the end of the day, your goal is always to travel at 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 the highest status. Said, I'm not trying to do a class or something, but hopefully you guys get it, you know, um, I'm sorry, you had anything you wanted to add for we get into the comments?
Um, no, I was I was just laughing about the coach comment, cause I'm like, really, like. The the airline knows that nobody wants to be in coach, they just offer it as a base value, where, you know, okay, you can't afford to do this, but you can still afford to travel. And everybody knows, and yeah, um I'm gonna leave that.
No, I mean, you know, it's it's truth in that or whatever, we should be feeling like we within ourselves are a diamond status. I don't remember what we were talking about here, Sister Sonia said, lol, true, I'm the same. Okay, that's what you're talking about, we are natural watchmen, yeah, you know, a husband, not a, not not a man, not a boy. Pretending to be a man or a man pretending to be a husband, but a husband is somebody who's naturally, like, yeah, you know, that's a husband quality, like. If we came here, we coming back home together, like that's.
And I heard, that's what a woman should look for, and a and a husband is somebody who, because a man shows that he loves you. Not by how he performs in the bedroom, but how he protects you and provides for you. That, you know, his prowess in the bedroom is one thing, and then what he does for you in terms of. His his role as a man in terms of protecting and providing is how he shows you that he loves.
Well, even for you, um forgive me, or well, correct me if I'm wrong, um. It's easier for a woman to get in the mood when she feels protected and provided for. But when you, when a woman, you know, like, cause sex for men is different, men can deal with sex as far as friction. As Sassy Murphy would say, you know, some something rubs against you and you're ready to go, right? Um a wife, you know, she needs to feel protected, provided for, loved, phone calls, text.
Caress her heart.
You know, and and, you know, and so it's something, you know, with women is interesting, because, but that's a diamond piece, you know, what makes you a diamond, what makes a man a diamond, because a man, a man. So it'd be an interesting thing where we're like, you know, oh, cause, so let's say your man is tired, he been doing a bunch of stuff, he been working, he been doing all this stuff. And he has to do it for like two weeks or two weeks, you're like, man, he hasn't really been giving me the advances, this and that or whatever, and it's like, true, but but understand, I bet you. If you just, once again, gave him some friction, just touched him, he's ready to go, but like, in his mind, he's like, okay. I'm just pouring and pouring and pouring, he's knocked out, you know, but I I promise you, like, but it's different, right, so for a woman, you know, but she hasn't been getting it, so at some point, he's gotta give something to so. But like, you know, but but he's speaking, quoting, I know this isn't the five love languages, but he's speaking the husband language, he's speaking like, hey, I'm giving, I'm giving, I'm giving, and she's like. Um you know, well, I'm giving, you know, uh you know, I'm I'm giving it, you know, if if he feels heard or respected even during the whole week, like. Okay, hey, I respect what you're doing, hey, what can I do to help out real quick, I know you tired, you know, like. I'm not trying to say ladies, y'all have to do this, I'm just trying to show you, like, there's a, we've changed the game, you know, our our grandparents grew up in a very different marriage game. I only say game, grew up in a very different idea of marriage than we did, right, so we used, so we would now. And I'm not saying I demand this from my wife or anything like that, cause I don't, right, my wife can tell you if I'm lying, whatever, right? And and hold me accountable, like, if I'm lying on any of this stuff, right, but I'm saying, like, I don't ask for any of this stuff, but, look, my grandfather. If he came home, um you know, actually, both grandfathers were in the military, but if they came home, they had a whole bunch of stuff they had to do. They were getting ready to go out and they had all this um training that they had to do, if they came home, they were tired, guess what happened, when they came home, they came home. And and the wife might have food on the table, might have, and for one of them, actually, they didn't have, you know, water that. You know, just flowed in the house at one point, so she actually had to draw a bath, like, you know, when they say draw a bath, like, that's what they meant, like, they had to draw a bath, they had to go. And put a bath together and stuff like that, and all that or whatever, but also, what was the reason? Cause my grandmother was never gonna have to worry about food, she was not gonna have to worry about bills, that was the deal. Like, she was not supposed to worry about, she was not supposed to worry about um, um, like, anything while he was gone, if he was gonna be gone for six months. Then he better make sure that like somehow, some way, she's gonna be getting money coming to the house every day. So if and if she gets that money, she's gonna be faithful, why? Because he's giving his, literally, willing to give his life. So that she will be able to have what's there, just like the Bible talks about, right? Um some uh, why why submit yourself to your own husband, wait a minute, husbands, give yourselves to her as Yeshua did for the assembly. Literally gave his life or was willing to go to that point, so it was like, there was a trade now, you know, now, you know. Well, and and by the way, it's not a bad thing, um our wives might make more money, um Maya, for the longest time, was making way, way more money. Then I still technically was make, I'm I'm not close to what she was making, um you know, and getting closer, you know, but not not there yet. Um you know, but um there are some things though that were, we very much so agree, I don't wanna get deep, deep into everything, right, but. Um you know, at the end of the day, it was known though, like, hey, at some point, I need to feel secure, if I feel I wanna work, I should work, but I shouldn't have to work. Those are the values that my wife.
And you know what really triggered it for me, uh was getting pregnant, because I realized how. I don't wanna say fragile, but how um vulnerable I was in that condition and how. If I were to get sick, if I got into a condition where I couldn't bring home money, then who was gonna do it, because the, you know, the baby's not gonna do it. You know, if I can, you know, that type of thing, who's going to make sure that we're okay, because I'm not in that position. In that condition to do it, and it becomes very, very, very um apparent. When when a woman gets pregnant, that, okay, we need, we need some money, we're gonna need some money.
Yeah, you know, and so those are things that had to be, you know, taken care of, corrected, and still are being in the process of being corrected, it's not a hundred percent there, you know, but at least. For, I mean, I can say probably now two and a half, three years, that, you know, um at least she's known. If something's there, she can't bring anything in, right, if she can't bring, and that was really all it was, was like, I don't even need you to bring in all the stuff that I was bringing in. Like, if she wanted to now, she still has connections with people, she can go and be making a whole lot more money than what I'm making now, if she wanted, right? But the fact that she can say, if I choose to, so like, you know, is a big deal for her, that's the security piece to where like, hey. But the fact that she can say, if I choose to, so like, you know, is a big deal for her, that's the security piece to where like, hey, I might not have. You know, um hundreds, thousands or whatever, right, but I do know that I'm straight, like I know we're gonna. Not just survive, like I know we wanna go somewhere, we can travel, like traveling's a thing for her, right, so we can travel places, we can still go foraging, we can still. You know, um go and and take a trip just out the blue, um, you know. We don't have to worry about something, she's even been able to like focus on the business, you know, um that's something I know. That, you know, she's she's talked about for years, um is being able to, I don't know if it was necessarily a business plan, but at least being able to, you know, just focusing on. On um doing things and being like, um, you know, following after Dr. like Africa, who you feel like, you know, you're kind of a disciple of and things like that, you know, those are things that.
I I feel like there's so much more uh peace because I think. I'm not sure, you know, I think a lot of times like we do, we we'll compare ourselves to what we what we think something should be. But, you know, what what you do is eh way more insufficient and I see your. I re- I have so much respect for you, because you know exactly what you're called to do and you do that every day. Um, no matter how you feel, what you wanna do, you know that you have a calling on your life and you go with that, like. Uh no matter how much money you bring in or don't bring in, or or will bring or won't bring in. Like I have so much respect for you and the fact that you have kept us um sustained and maintained. And we're able to have a very good lifestyle based on the work that you do is, you know, just so much more of a plus, like I, you know. I always knew that you had so much potential that, you know, nothing could really stop you if you actually uh. Believed in your own worth and your own value, like I always saw you as being something that I wanted to see more of in the world that. There's never gonna be another Kofi and you, I see you up there, you know, in all the best ways. With the philosophers and with the um. The prophets of our time, you know, the Malcolm X's and the Martins and the Marcus Garvys, I see you up there. I see you as a visionary, a leader, someone who was called to do great things. So, you know, I've always seen you as being. I don't know, a diamond, um no matter, you know, whether you saw the value. In it or not, like I always saw you as being someone who's up there and I, you know, I know I have excellent taste, I have amazing taste. I had to, I'm a Leo.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You said, uh, you'd rather have a true husband, women that women naturally seeing the whole picture, our design, you feel? Yeah, well, definitely intuition, I would say that both of us see different sides of the coin, but you guys, but definitely have like the side of intuition. And of like, um, wisdom, wisdom is actually a feminine trait anyway. You know, but there's a lot of stuff that you guys do, a lot of men, we're just kinda like go-getters, or hey, we just wanna do this to get peace, you know, we don't think past that sometimes. Hey, Shalom, um Sister Beverly, thanks for being on, how you doing too, listen, thanks for the compliment. Oh, Aunt Life says, uh, yeah, being a provider, amen, very important. Elohim is great, yes, he is, uh Amelia, thank you very much, or Emiliano, um. Oh, yeah, Sister Sonia says, it's great that you see quality, um. Oh, thank you, Tamika, Tamika says she likes the way we speak of each other, off-grid, how you doing, sir? Said, uh, must feel great to be loved and supported by a spouse, well, it is, and there's things that we need to do to make sure, you know, not everything is. Perfect with us either, but you know, we're we we've we've decided to focus on the positive. And doesn't mean there's not any ever ever any negative, cause um, I don't know, maybe one day we'll feel comfortable and I don't think I, we will, but maybe one day we'll feel comfortable. I don't know, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years on the road, telling you guys some of the stuff behind the scenes and some of the things that have been said, and you probably won't feel like it's so cute. But you know, we got to, we got into a place where it's genuine, I say that at the end of the day, like, no matter what. Yeah, yeah, oh, okay, that's great. So at the end of the day, no matter what has happened with us though, like, we're at a genuine place, and we always were, I think that's one thing at the end of the day. That there's always been a place of being genuine, uh mistakes have been made, you know, but once we recognize. Our value once again that we are diamonds and we understood what we are as being a genuine diamond, yeah, we're human beings, yeah, we're all human. You know, so we've all said some things and you'd be like, whoa, really, y'all said that, you know, but. And that's that's why whenever we do life coaching, marital coaching sessions and stuff, you will never hear me like just start judging somebody. Like if somebody says something, I'll be like, okay, like, yeah, you're a human being had a bad day. Or you're a love like, like, you know, like if somebody's love language is not words of affirmation, somebody can say something crazy and you not realize that that'll sit with somebody else for like seven months. Just because it's a words of affirmation thing, um and then somebody else will be like, well, that person with words of affirmation slipped up, so they'll. Sit with something if you say something bad, because they'd be like, well, isn't your love language words of affirmation, so you must have really meant that, you know, so. But it's it it's a lot of things in it, but you know, our focus has become on the positive, not saying that that's the end all be all. You know, oh, I didn't know you were married thirty years before.
Was married for thirty years?
Charlton said, that's what we have to accept, um to make it work, yeah, you know. And we accept that, you know, the things that are great and sometimes the things that are not so great, but you know, I I I I love, I love Maya, I love my wife, um. You know, um, like I've decided from from really, you know, I guess. Kinda sort of day one, but once we had our conversation on the phone, and then, you know, then basically once, you know, our first. I guess, I guess you would call it date, our first date, if you will, was July fourth, uh two thousand thirteen, we met on July second, two thousand thirteen. We talked on July third, two thousand thirteen thirteen thirteen, so. Basically, like, once we went out, like, from that point on, I had in my mind, pretty much kinda made it to say, like, I wasn't a hundred percent there, but I kinda like. You know, this is my wife, eh, you know, and she seemed like she kinda let me in as like, this is my husband, and from that point on.
At first I thought we were just playing, I I like, cause I've heard a lot of guys be like, this is my wifey, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna marry you, like.
Well, okay, I wasn't playing then.
Yeah, like, so like, I like, and at one point I was like, you know, you can, you don't have to say that for me to like you, like, I'm gonna, like. We we can still be together, you don't have to, you know, keep pushing this whole marriage thing.
That's funny, so I'm learning this for the first time right there. Yeah, I remember her saying that, I'm not saying that part, I just remember hearing for the first, this is the first time I'm hearing like that we were, that she thought we were just playing the whole time, but. Like, but I'm just saying, like, as far as I was, I'm I'm concerned, like, you know, that's from that date, you know, um. And I was already, she was too, you know, we were looking for a spouse, we weren't looking for a man or a woman or a boyfriend, girlfriend. And it was crazy how many, you be meeting people at seventy years old, talking about this is my girlfriend, it's like, what you, what you, what you doing? But but we were very honest upfront, that was our focus, that was our mindset, and you know, we were basically when we said that, we were basically saying, look, I'm a diamond. Um, I'm a diamond, I know my value, I'm trying to be cut by another diamond. And as far as the word of Yah is concerned, you know, I don't know if we were having that conversation right up front all the way, but we were. You know, as far as the word of Yah is concerned, like, you know, a husband can only be cut by a wife and a wife can only be cut by a husband, so. Eh if we're gonna be together, like, that's that's what it's about.
I like cutting your jib.
Come up with those moms, y'all heard dad jokes, she's got all the mom jokes, uh. No, we actually do dad jokes, we have like a bunch of dad jokes, we do all the time as a family, Solomon loves dad jokes. You know, you know, dad jokes, like, you know, why it's uh six of eight to seven, cause seven, eight, nine, like, that makes him laugh, stuff like that, so. Um, however, I don't really have anything else to really add, so. I don't know, um, do you have anything else you want to leave off with? I actually gotta get ready anyways, we got our early rise of Bible study session tomorrow, then we have our live, and then we have. And then actually another live, and then we start our uh our classes. So I really don't have much to add, and I'm gonna get ready to get a little bit of rest and. Be ready to start with Hebrew characters to borrow for those who are starting excited about that, and then we'll have. Basic Hebrew after that, and then after that, we'll have sovereignty one and sovereignty two on Wednesday, sovereignty one at eight and sovereignty two at nine, and then. Thursday, natural medicine two taught by Deanna Bubaya, and then basic French taught by Deanna Bubaya, her first time teaching two classes.
At one time.
During the week, and then on Saturday, we'll be doing cryptocurrency. And by the way, like I said, those who have already taken crypto with us, we're gonna make sure that we um set up a uh. We'll make sure that we set up for those who have taken crypto already, we'll have like maybe one or two sessions you guys can sit in, just to make sure that we update you on some things, especially with people getting NFTs or. All these different things with taxes or, you know, um, uh, you know, well, this will be kind of a sovereignty and cryptocurrency thing, but. Um, you see in all these executive orders being written and stuff like that, so how, what should we pay attention to, how can we get around that, what should we do? You know, when we should, when which should be bullish, should we use VPN, stuff like that to make sure that we can get around certain things? So we'll talk about all those different things that are coming up, I'm sorry, X W N says. On what platform is your early riser and how can we find uh about the classes, so if you would like to, uh early rise of Bible study session. Yeah, if you look on our podcast, or any of the podcasts that are already posted, just um look on there. Matter of fact, it might even be in the description box for this live, but um if you look on any of the podcasts that are already posted. Um, all you gotta do is look on there for our phone number, text us on the phone number. We can make sure that we then text you the link for early rise of Bible study session. And if you text us, even though the classes are about to start this week, feel free to get in touch with us tomorrow, and I will, I don't think I have. Anything scheduled for tomorrow, which is wild, I usually try to make Mondays. Open as far as catching up on stuff, but usually I end up making a bunch of meetings, but I don't think I have anything scheduled for tomorrow, so. Um, I can contact you sometime tomorrow if you're available and all the way up till class time starts, which is nine o'clock PM Eastern New York time. Um, besides the lives, of course, I will make sure that I get in touch with you and we can get you signed up for class. So, yeah, um, just uh text us, um, I'll put it in the chat over here in uh on the podcast. Uh, the the two zero two number, if you wanna go ahead and then copy and paste it or write it down or whatever you need to do. And we'll make sure that happens for you, you can also go to our website, I'll put that in the chat as well, or on the podcast, that's um. Uh Kofi dash of forty dot com, and either way, you should be able to see what's going on with this. And we'll make sure that, um, you know, we get you whatever information you need, so thanks for the question and the comments concerns, any. If there's no other questions, comments, and concerns, rather.
There were a bunch.
Oh, they were, okay. There were twenty eight comments, but were there any questions, comments, or concerns? Says, I'm excited for the class. I didn't see, alright. Thanks for sharing, you've been smiling since you joined, oh, amen, thank you, Sister Tamika, thank you, Tagamah, she said, we're a lovely couple. Yes, marriage is work, become eh the um and become worth it, yeah, become worth it, be worthy of the work that your spouse is putting in. I promise you, like, that's actually a great philosophy, I know we're about to get off, I just wanna kinda give. I guess give you credit first of all, I think it was Brother Clint, but also give just, talk about that real quick. Uh, cause literally, I'm 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 falling asleep, so I'm not gonna be too too great a little bit for uh this. Uh value in this in this sense, but um, yeah, like, if somebody's gonna put all that work into you. Brother or sister, if somebody's gonna put all that work into you, then you should be worth it, right? Like, it's so, that's that's like one of the most disheartening things, yeah, I know people get caught in cheating and stuff like that, but when I heard, cause I've deal with that sometimes, right? Like, I've gotten calls in the middle of the day, so and so is cheating with so and so, or somebody's like sending pictures and so like it, it, you you get a lot of wild stuff. That hurt, that hurts people's hearts so much, right? You know what hurts their hearts more is when they were, they're like, I thought that this person I gave all this work to was worth it. And come to find out that they really didn't show me that they were worth it, that's that's really what messes people up. And so I like what you said there, you know, like, work, put put that work in hard work in into someone. And please, if somebody gonna put that hard work into you, be ready to like be worth worthy of it, like, please be ready to like be worthy of it. Um, if, you know, that that's that's the best thing you can, cause now check it out, if you're worthy of it, and they put all that work in you into you. Wow, like, how much greater are you gonna be, and then watch this, while they're putting all that work into you, so that, and you're worthy of it, right? If when they're worthy of it as well, and you're putting work into them. Then basically you become better at putting work into them the next time, all you do is put each other in the next level, and then they put you in the next level, and then you put them. And so when one person's there, you know, like, you, it's it's hard, you know, when you, you know, li- listen to somebody like Eric, Eric Thomas or somebody. Why is he always talking about his wife, cause first thing he's gonna say is, look, I was homeless on the street, when I was homeless on the street, she would take her mother's. Her mu- her mother would give her, um, you know, allowance money, and she would take her allowance money and she'd give me most of it. So he was like, so the first, so when I started making money, like money, money for real, he's that first thing that I did. Was I went and I wanted to to show her that I loved her, he said, so I went and I paid off her student student loans. Why, because I wanted her to know I'm not going anywhere, and the first thing I'm doing is investing in something that makes you feel what's secure. When she did that, you don't think that, or when he did that, you don't think that she turned around and made him feel respected? You know, like, she put work in him, she he's the reason, she's the reason he went to college. You know, got degrees, so, you know, and he brags on the degrees now, but he can't brag on the degree without bragging on his wife. So, you know, as we're going there, just just remember that if somebody's gonna put all that work into you, please be worthy of it, you know, um, you know, um. My wife is worthy of it, I know, and I put work into her, and 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 I work hard to be worthy of whatever she puts into me, you know. And it's sometimes the stuff that's so much that it's hard for me to even contain it. Nevertheless, though, that's when you get that blessing where it's like, she gives me so much now, it spills over, right, my cup runneth over, like, so. So, you know, be be ready to do that, put that hard work in, I'm not gonna go in too much further, we appreciate you all. I'm not gonna go any further, actually, this is kinda where I gotta take take a, um, take my lead. And um thank you guys for spending some more time with us, we'll see some of you all tomorrow, early in the rising, um, thank you for spending some time with us. Um, do you have anything else you wanted to say, okay, so as always, thank you so much, this has been. For our special sessions, this has been myself and my wife, Deanna Bubaya, who lives a life that's able to be honored, once again, check her out, um. At Bloom and Flowers, not A and D, but the letter N, Bloom and Flowers, on TikTok, YouTube, her website, and Pinterest. Uh, remember the tank year of the month is I am immune, and uh thank you for tuning in with us. Check out um Solomon's um pages, uh whether it be on YouTube or I guess now his his TikTok page is Sir Sally now?
No, his TikTok page is still seven, 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 Solo Face.
Okay, so seven, 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 Solo Face. Yes, okay, so seven, 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 S O L O F A C E, you can follow him on YouTube and TikTok. And on Roblox, if your children wanna play with him, he was actually playing with somebody today. Um, I don't know if that person was even be watching or whatever if he is, um, to young brother Jamir. Who I guess brother Ja- his older brother Jalen's bor- born day was earlier this month, I guess, so happy born day to both of them. Um, we're thankful and grateful to each and every one of them, matter of fact, we had a bunch of January ones, so we had Brother Thomas, we had Brother Thomas granddaughter. Or grandchild, I don't know if it was granddaughter, grandson, um, who else was there? Actually, I think, uh, wasn't, uh, it might have been Sister, uh, Shawty and both, uh, Jalen. And and Jamir, and there's somebody else, oh, and Sister Beverly.
There's been a bunch of anniversaries, I think this month too.
Oh, really? I don't remember the anniversary, so, so that's something down the road, we wanna get those lined up too, so we can actually make sure that we give y'all a shout out. Eventually too, but thank you all so much for being on, we appreciate the king queen and each and every one of you, and uh check us out on on multiple platforms, um. Hashtag find Kofi, hashtag F I N D K O F I, if you can't remember anything else, remember that, hashtag find Kofi, my name, my first name, hashtag find Kofi. We thank you all so much, our prayers that you not just be hearers of this word, we need you to pray on it, meditate it fast on it, make a part of your life so you can do it as well, you can execute. Thank you so much for being on, as always, this has been, um, uh, my wife and I, um, Maya and Kofi. And uh we are over servants of Christ, where we are always changing lives one mind at a time, but being the voice of the voices and speaking the unspoken until we have the great privilege, opportunity, and responsibility. Of being in front of you all again, please remember as always that you are loved, you're necessary, you're majestic, you're fearful and wonderfully made, and you. Which is all of us working together, will be the reason why people who are in this system no longer have to be other, shalom, family, thank you.